The story of the day? Yes?
We wrote it. The lady wrote it?
Yeah.
We met and we wrote it.
Oh, yeah. You said, you said, "We're good to go." Call me.
We are now at seven, or six thirty-five. Call to mean, call to, call to order the regular meeting of the East Point Community Schools Board of Education, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six thirty-five P. M. Please call to roll.
Mrs. Rayford. Excuse. Mrs. Richardson. Dr. Early.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Grunberg.
Here.
Mrs. Grunberg.
Here.
Mr. Williams, here.
If we could all stand so Dan can lead us in the pledge? Don't rush, Dan, make sure everybody's standing now.
Okay. Our pleasantries to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we need a motion for approval of the agenda. Is there one?
Place forth a motion to approve the agenda as written. Is there support?
Support.
Please call the vote.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Mrs. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
And Mrs. Grunberg?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have consent agenda. I'm gonna make the motion for that with a couple changes.
Okay.
And I hope somebody supports it. So that we can talk about it a little bit. I would move the board accept a consent agenda as presented with the following changes. After A, before the word minutes, I would like approval of. After B, before the minutes, word minutes, I would like approval of. And the same for letter C. And then for letter D, I would like support of. Does anybody wish to support that?
Say that again for letter D?
Support of.
At the beginning?
Yep. After the letter D, be, before the word bills. Question? You support it? Question? Well, I gotta give support on the motion. You got it, Ed? Support?
Support.
Okay. Now, since I got it, it's, I might answer your question. It's the first bite of the apple.
Okay.
Because I made the motion, I get that first bite. I wa, I wanted to, because this all came about because our esteemed colleague down there, Ms. Richardson, she gave me a call a while back. And if you notice, she's been voting approval and support for consent agenda, right? So... You know, after we had the call, I could see she was kinda conflicted because, and I didn't really catch it at the time, but conflicted because if you look at the minutes, that's something that we approve, right? Because that's being done for the first time. Somebody's already approved those bills and they have been paid. So we're basically supporting what they've done, right? You see, so it is kinda a difference. And when I started hearing you vote about, you know, vote after it, it started to dawn on me, technically, she is absolutely correct. Is because when we're approving the minutes, we are approving the minutes because it's the first time anybody's touched them and they're gonna be, I guess you could say, part of the record in our district. Whereas the bills, those have already been recorded, paid, and moving on. We're saying we're supporting them. Same thing with employee new hires as well, too. So I would like to, if we're under the understanding, I would like that in front of the minutes that we put approval of minutes. And I would like anything else, including new hires, if it's action that administration has already taken and we're just supporting it, I would like support of in front of those items. Okay? And if you notice, I worded the, uh, motion acceptance of this consent agenda. I would move that we accept the consent agenda as presented. And in that way, by voting yes on that, you're voting for approval of the minutes and you're voting for support of the other things. Understand? That was the whole premise. Now I'll get to your question. I know you're never late on questions.
Past practice? How long has past, past practice been in play with this certain?
Uh, a long time, but you know what? Sometimes I think to myself, every now and then, you know, and, and I trust when we get new board members and other people step up and they make you realize, hey, technically, now consent agenda, here's something. When I first got on the board, we did not have a consent agenda. It's something that's been added since I've been on the board. So it's never really been going through. It used to be, we had a line for payment of the bills. We had a line, we had a line for everything. We used to actually improve every employee contract individually at one time. And then we decided, well, that was getting ridiculous if you had ten, fifteen new hires, you know, at the beginning of a school year, to have to go through all of them individually. And that's when it kinda came about, we set a consent agenda. I know we changed it because at one time we said payment of the bills and a board member said, well, they've already really been paid. We're not approving the payment of them. And we're not. And that's why really underneath this, when we say a motion to approve this stuff, well, some of it's already been approved. We're just supporting it.
Yeah, but the standard was already, uh, you itemized it, aligned it individually. What, a couple of years ago, then you came and redone? Am I correct?
Well, what I'm saying is, we're still treating it the same. I'm just saying, going forward, I just like those words included at the beginning so that when we approve it, we know that we are approving certain things and we're supporting others. And that's the only distinction. And actually, it came out of the conversation I had with a brand-new board member, like, I had never really thought about it, but it does make sense if you think about it.
So the question is, 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 so we'll do A, B, and C, we approve?
Well...
And D, support?
Right, and that's what I said. So if we say we accept the consent agenda as presented, with those words at the beginning of it, that tells us exactly what we're doing. We're approving these things, we're supporting the other. So you can just make the one motion and vote yes or no, and that's it.
Is that a sake of being transparent? Are we trying to be transparent?
I mean, as far as doing this?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's transparent.
I thought the other part was, yeah, six in one hand, half a dozen in the other.
Well, it's just, it's just adding the words, two words to the beginning, that's all of each line. And that's just because some things we approve and some things we actually support, the way that I look at it. Like I said, she, she brought up something I, I...
So we would just vote yes on the vote?
What's that?
I don't wanna be here all night doing line item.
No, 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 it won't be line item.
No, this is just a change of the wording in the consent agenda. We'll still vote on them as a group, no. Little bit more discussion on this one because this is the first time we're doing it. But going forward, I anticipate it'll be just a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented and then everybody votes yes or no, and then we move on. But, okay?
Now that we all, let's move on.
We all understand? We're all all right with her adding those words at the beginning in the future? Just so we're all on the same page? Okay. Please call the vote with the changes.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Mrs. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
And Mrs. Grunberg?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have superintendent's report. Superintendent Gibson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education and those of you joining us online. Um, I'd first like to start, uh, by thanking the staff at Forest Park Elementary School this morning. There was a threat, um, that was called into the school this morning. Um, we did work with local authorities and determined that we would not conduct school today. The staff was absolutely incredible this morning. Um, from administration to secretaries in the front office. We did move all the children to East Point Middle School. Parents, we thank you for your support and understanding and flexibility as we take the safety of all of our children and staff very seriously here at East Point. Um, the authorities did apprehend the gentleman who had called in the multiple phone threats to the office staff. At this time, I cannot disclose the nature of the language that was used, but I want to let the community know that an individual did call in threats. Um, and I wanna thank the staff, not only of Forest Park, but also the entire central office team, transportation, and operations, who all responded quickly and efficiently this morning in keeping our school safe. Our new, um, marquee banner out front of the school was used to communicate with the public and with parents dropping off children. Um, so I thank everyone involved this morning for helping to keep all of our students and communities safe. So carry on and share that the all-district community gathering occurred Friday before spring break. We appreciated everybody in our community who came out to share their feedback. Um, we got some great feedback from staff. The team is working through the data that was collected. Um, and we will be closing that feedback loop with the community that came as well as our staff. So thank you to everybody that was involved. Forest Park Literacy Night. Forest Park hosted sixty-four different families for their literacy night. Um, and students and families played literacy games, made bookmarks, had snacks. They had the best district book fair I have seen set up. And it was a brand-new hire paraprofessional, haha, on her second week on the job, and set up an incredible book fair. The entire media center was transformed of Forest Park. Families were taking time off to come in and shop with their kids at the book fair, and it was amazing. They raised over a thousand five hundred dollars in Scholastic books. And I know that the staff at Forest Park will absolutely find use of that, all of the, one thousand five hundred dollars. The Macomb Food Program Blessing Bags. A huge thank you to the Macomb Food Program and the Blessing Bags of food that were provided to our schools to share with families. Uh, over spring break, the bags included macaroni and cheese spaghetti and sauce peanut butter and jelly to help families that might be dependent on school for feeding their children over break. So we are very grateful for that. Um, we had A. P. Day at Wayne State. Our East Point High School Advanced Placement Studio Art Class took a trip to Wayne State for Advanced Placement Day in March. Students had the opportunity to explore the art building, attend to art and design lectures, as well as, uh, learn how to use the hydraulic press to create keychains. We thank you, Wayne State University, for sharing your artistic lab with our Advanced Placement Arts students. Um, next up, I'd like to invite Forest Park Principal and Instructional Coach, uh, to the podium. They have had a challenging day and we appreciate very much that they have still come to present and speak to the board a little bit more about the great work at Forest Park. So, um, although it's inconvenient after a very stressful situation, we, the entire board gets to thank you for your leadership this morning in keeping our students and communities safe. Um, but I'll turn it over to Principal Heather Agueros and Title One Instructional Coach Kirsten Showenzi.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having us tonight. Um, we're gonna just briefly give you kind of an overview of really what Kirsten does here at Forest Park as an instructional coach and how that ties in with me as an administrator as well and, um, how that then benefits all of our staff and students. Um, so we will get started. Okay. Uh, so what we did up here is we, um, shared with you the six Es of the framework for teaching focus areas. And although all of them are extremely important, um, in the more recent, um, last few years, we focused on three areas, um, the most with our teachers because we have new staff coming in and, and these areas, we feel, are really key to helping them get started. So the areas we've been focusing on are learning environment, learning empowerment, and learning engagement. Um, and so by focusing on these areas, it really helps, um, our new staff because we're looking at, um... Engagement in the classroom, instructional strategies, classroom, um, management, um, the way their classroom is set up is a huge, um, help in making sure that their classroom, um, engagement is working. I'm sorry, I'm a little off today.
We're, we're kinda surprised we're even standing there, but that's okay.
I'm so sorry. Um, so, I also, we were just given, it's already been flipped, but we were just given, um, last, the week before break, that, um, coaching analogy, collaborating, observing, assisting, communicating, and helping. And we both really thought, that really hones in on what we do, um, to help our teachers and really what Kirsten does, um, on a daily basis to help our teachers, um, improve in their practices every day. Um, so what we do, we have several different things we do. We do walkthroughs, instructional walkthroughs. So we do them individually and then we also do them together twice a week. Um, individually, we, I go into every classroom every day, um, just kinda making sure things are going great, everybody's, you know, doing well. But then we also do what's called an instructional walkthrough on every teacher once a week. Um, and that's really to go in and, and just kinda see like what's happening in the classroom. Um, what instructional strategies are you putting in place? What kind of classroom management do you have? What kind of feedback are you giving the students? Um, is it student-led or is it strictly teacher-led? So there's many different areas we're looking at. We work on certain areas with certain teachers to make sure that we improve that practice, um, before we move on. Because if we throw too many things at them, you know, with a brand-new teacher, they're like, what do you want me to do? So, um, through individual walkthroughs, that's what we do. Um, and then together, as our, um, administration and coach partnership, we, twice a week, go into classrooms and we just kinda observe together. And then we kinda come out and we talk about just what did we see? And that helps us to focus on what we're gonna work on with our staff at a later date. Um, so that takes us to the feedback conversations. So as we go through the classrooms, um, I didn't add it. There's a document that gets filled out and sent to the staff, um, through Standards for Success. They can read what we've seen, what we, um, commented on, and then they come and they meet with us and they talk about, um, what they thought they did well, what we thought they could improve on, and how we can work together to make that happen. Um... There's also coaching cycles that Kirsten does. I'm gonna let her talk about it.
So through the coaching cycles, we'll either do those individually with each teacher or we'll do them as a grade level. Um, and that kind of just comes off of our walkthroughs and what we've seen and where we know teacher experience level is needed. So we'll do either, when it comes to, uh, the individual coaching cycles, it will be either assets-based coaching or, and looking at the teacher's strengths and where to continue developing upon those. Or it'll be results-based coaching and looking at where, like, what's a standard that the students need the most improvement on and what instructional strategies we can, um, strengthen within the classroom for those. So we'll work, uh, I'll do modeling and I will, you know, teach a lesson and have the teachers taking notes, talking with me, and being able to observe. And then flip-flopping where I will then watch them and we'll do co-teaching and we'll teach a lesson together, um, where the teacher can watch me do parts, I can watch the teacher do parts of the lesson, um, and doing like a kind of a gradual release with co-teaching. And then moving into continuous feedback, doing pre-tests and post-tests with the students to see where they are starting and where they're at the end. Um, we'll do whole group, like, grade level coaching as well. That's more standards-based. For example, I just, ba, a couple months ago, finished a first-grade coaching cycle where we were working on text features with the students and all of the first-grade teachers gave a pre-assessment to the students. We looked at how many fell and where the, where the student scores fell. And then, as a group, we came up with different strategies, ways to include, um, new strategies throughout every subject and throughout even the specials and including special teachers just to continue to support and really hone in on those skills. And then meeting weekly during grade level P L Cs to touch base on where we're at. And then at the end, doing a post-assessment and being able to compare our data and then look even further at the students and how to further support them in small group and whole group, um, instruction.
Also with the, the coaching cycles, sorry. Also with the coaching cycles and the conversations that we have together, that's how we plan our P L Cs, our weekly P L Cs and also our grade level P L Cs. We, um, focus on what each grade level needs and we, we plan it out for the month. So we already know what we're gonna be working on with our staff. Our staff knows as well. Um, we look at the data and it just kind of, um, forms where we're going with, with the, with the teachers. Um, and also provides us the opportunity to understand what additional supports they may need. So, um, it could be that as we go through a classroom, we see one teacher is, um, implementing instructional strategy extremely well. Somebody else may be struggling with that. So we give them the opportunity to go in and observe that teacher. And, and give them different ways of, of, uh, implementing those strategies. Um... So we have some pictures up there, but what I would like to direct you to is the bottom corner where it says School Supply Drive. Um, and what that is, it says Forest Park Elementary, uh, on the picture. And that is displayed at Office Depot in East Point. Um, I'm very excited. Uh, they chose Forest Park Elementary to be their school for the quarter. So, um, starting April second, going through January, July first, um, any, we, East Point, um, Forest Park, it will get a percentage of whatever they sell, basically. And that money will then be turned over to us to give teachers for school supplies. So we're really excited, um, that they chose Forest Park for quarter two. Um, and I think it's gonna be a really great opportunity for our staff. So, and then we just kind of gave you some pictures of our students enjoying their day.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Heather and Kirsten, for talking more about the instructional coaching cycle. Um, I think Heather and Kirsten do a fantastic job as a coaching duo. Because what we're trying to build here at East Point Community Schools is staff who are aspiring to grow and improve their practice. And the infusion of the instructional coach is to bring people along and to engage teachers in reflective practice so they keep being excited about coming to work. And the other piece the instructional coach does for us is it's an extra layer of support so that we're supporting new teachers to the profession and we're supporting those veteran staff in growing their capacity for identifying those areas of weakness. Is there anything else that, we're good? Thank you so very much. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Agueros or Ms. Showenzi about the instructional coaching that they do at Forest Park?
I saw Mr. Williams hand.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, say congratulations on that. But the school supplies, does that include, uh, computers, laptops, and office furniture?
So, I, my understanding is...
He's watching.
My understanding is that they just provide us with a dollar amount and we can distribute it and it can be spent, as long as it's spent at Office Depot.
No, when I, my question is...
The purchase of...
When you, when somebody goes in the Home Depot and purchases...
Yes, I apologize. Yes, I misunderstood. I thought you meant, well, we could spend it on. Yes, whatever spent, whatever you buy.
Oh, okay. Sounds good.
You gonna be checking receipts?
No. I just wanted to make sure because it's...
Those are bigger items, yeah.
Yeah, and it's the end of the year. I could see it benefiting us more at the beginning of the year when everybody's going in buying school supplies. So, the bigger the purchase, the more, you know, the school will receive. That was the question, reason for the question.
Thank you so much, Forest Park Elementary School. You did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
So I'd like to remind the public of a few upcoming events. April thirteenth is our kindergarten roundup at Forest Park and Crescentwood Elementary Schools. Um, flyers are being distributed. Um, hopefully, if you are an incoming parent, you will have a flyer in your mailbox. Uh, we are very excited to offer families two ways to engage with East Point Community Schools, ten A. M. in person or six P. M. virtually. Um, online, you can join us for kindergarten roundup. You can also contact each school's, uh, principal, if you're unable to make either time, and set up your own appointment to learn more about what makes East Point Community Schools a great place to learn, play, and grow. Uh, May twenty-fourth will be Pleasantview Spring Play, seven P. M. at East Point High School Auditorium. If you didn't make the last play, please join us in celebrating our fine thespians and on their first debut of using the East Point High School Auditorium. Uh, May twenty-sixth will be the Bellevue Grief Walk. We invite, um, people to work with Debbie Threet at Bellevue Elementary School if you are interested in participating with our community in the grief walk. And finally, uh, June first will be East Point High School's commencement ceremony, seven P. M. at Macomb Community, um, Sports and Expo Center. Thank you, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, next, we'll open up the first hearing of the public. Does anyone wish to be heard? Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close that. So we'll open and close at a seven o'clock. Next, we have discussion action number eight, uh, business operations recommendation for purchase of copy machines.
Good evening. Uh, today I'm here to, um, ask for your approval to proceed with the purchase of copy machines. The district, uh, formerly leased machines. We had a lease that was, uh, initiated in two thousand and fifteen. Final payment was made in two thousand and twenty, uh, on a fleet of copy machines in all our buildings and central office. And, uh, those machines are about two years past their useful life. It's usually a five-year life. But because we had a shutdown, uh, during COVID and we had, you know, it's not all our staff working because of virtual instruction, we were able to limp along a little bit longer with our current machines. But now the time has come to replace them. Now, when they go down, it's hard to get parts for them. So sometimes they're down for a couple days at a time and staff is not able to use them. So we did analysis of all the machines in our district, where, what the usage was on each one, and what we think we need for the future. We used to have forty-two machines, uh, but we don't need that many more because we're a little bit smaller district. So we're gonna purchase seven less machines. We intend to use COVID funds for this, uh, re, which is a grant, so it doesn't burden our general fund with monthly lease payments. We recommend the actual purchase of machines so we don't have like a embedded cost of interest in the lease payment, which is roughly about six percent right now. And the nice thing about it is, by using these grant funds, the general fund doesn't have this burden for the next five or six years. And then we can figure out if potentially use bond money or some other source of funding, you know, at that later date. So we looked at three companies. Uh, Rico is the, the current company we have in the district. We also looked at Sharp and Epson Machines. Uh, we like the Sharp, I mean, pardon me, the, uh, Epson Machines the best because it uses a different type of technology. Like, if you ever go to a copy machine and run it, the paper's hot when it comes out. That's because it, there's a powder, uh, toner in there and that's, it's heated up and sprayed onto paper. So all that heat causes paper jams. It causes parts to break down more frequently. But they have a technology that's been around about ten years where they actually spray an ink onto a page. Has fewer moving parts in the machine. It runs on less electricity and it's, uh, doesn't break down as often. So we're recommending that we go with the Epson Machines. Uh, two of our team members, Yarslin Young from my department, Danny Latham, who are technology coordinator, went out to their showroom and demoed the machines and they were pleased with that. So, um, that's how we settled on the, uh, the, uh, Epson Machines. The purchase is per, uh, consortium pricing so that meets our, the board's bidding requirements for a purchase of this size. Any questions on... Recommendation for Epson copy machines?
I just have a question.
Sure.
How long's the warranty on it since we're gonna be purchasing them?
Well, it's, it's, it's as long as we pay the service contract that goes along with it. So right now, the service contract we're paying for is part of the purchase price. But after that five years, depending on the condition of the machines, they adjust that per copy price. So, uh, it's, but, you know, they'll, they'll go on for ten years, but that price per copy to warrant it is gonna keep going up as the machines age and break down more.
And is it ink?
It is ink.
It is ink?
It is, yes.
You said it's, it's sprayed on, and the ink sprayed on the...
Yes, that's my understanding. It's, it's not like the old mini-meograph... It's, it's not like the old mini-meograph machines or anything like that, no. It's, it's high quality, yeah.
That's what I'm looking to make-
Yeah, it's high quality, right.
I'm not going down that rabbit hole.
Right.
And then second, second of all, that process, so we're not paying like we did the last process, we buy them right out or we're just doing the same process?
I'm sorry-
We're not buying them right out?
We are owning, we will own the machines rather than leasing, right. So if at the end of the time, you know, some machines that still have some life on them, we just let those run a little longer and we replace the others if we need to.
I don't understand what you mean.
That's the typical life, yeah.
So let me ask you, is, are, are we saving money on the ink or just purchasing them outright?
Well, we don't pay for the ink per se. We pay a maintenance cost per copy. It's, it's like .3 cents a copy. And that includes ink, it includes staples, pretty much everything but paper is included in that cost. And that's baked into our purchase price.
And isn't the price different on our leasing because we pay more now for color copies-
Yeah, so there's-
Than black and white?
Right, color copy is more expensive in general than a black and white copy. These machines have the ability, they can, I'm sorry, they can all print color, but we can, because of the software that's with the machine, you can restrict the machines to black and white, or certain machines to black and white. You can allow X number of copies per employee or per staff member that wants to use that copy, so you can kind of keep track of their usage and who's using it. You can keep track of the number of cop, color copies per person, you know, or per department, however you want to do it. So all this to be done remotely, like from Danny's office, you know. When a new person comes on board, you can give them a code, or they go to the machine, punch in the code and get their copies rather than having copies made and sitting on the machine and someone forgets to pick them up and they, or they get thrown out and they have to reprint them, so it's a lot less paper usage also, cut down on the waste.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You know, in my office, they try to give me a code to print too, and I don't understand that. You should be just free-hearted, right?
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Yes, I make the motion that we approve the purchase of the Epson copy machines.
Support. Please call the vote.
Yes.
Mr. Rosso?
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Richardson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Grunberg?
Yes.
Okay, next we have B, Board of Education, one superintendent's evaluation. I would move that the board approve the superintendent's evaluation as presented.
Support.
Any questions, comments? Please call the vote.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Ms. Rosso?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafer?
No.
Mrs. Rich, Richardson?
Yes.
Mrs. Grunberg?
Yes.
Okay, next we have application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Do you have any kind of presentation on this or we're just looking for support?
I can speak to that. Today, the team, the bond team met with Treasury and we presented our plan for the bond, August Bond 2023. Today, we are asking the board to make a recommendation for approval of the application for preliminary qualification for the bond. This will allow us to move forward with our progress, and then we would come back to the board in May to officially approve the entire bond application. Jeff Atkins is here, if the board has any questions. Otherwise, this is an approval item for moving this project forward.
Is there a motion?
I have a question. In looking at some of the information regarding the work to be done, I noticed that there was nothing in the high school about the parking lot. Was that not a consideration?
So we have two very large campuses. We've got a very large campus at East Point High School. We also have East Point Middle School. Both of those campuses are below the required, Treasury likes to see a 60% utilization rate in those campuses. This, this team is not recommending that we add a lot of work into this bond package for the high school or for the middle school, as we feel that there are additional conversations with the community and constituents. We do not want to invest money into schools that we are not fully utilizing. We feel that that is a bad fiscal and it is not a good fiduciary steward of taxpayer money. We do feel that putting secure entrances at both of those campuses is a necessity. While the parking lot at the high school may have needs, we don't feel that investing in the parking lot at this time is the best use of taxpayer funds until we get farther down the road unpacking goal number five of the board's strategic plan, and that is the evaluation of our fiscal and structural resources. For this project, we did not feel that rushing forward into work at the high school or the middle school campus was the best use. We want more time to allow our strategic plan, action team number five, to work through the facility study process and to make some determinations about programming and what our needs are with campus. We did focus though on the culinary program at East Point High School being part of the bond package work. We have a lot of students involved in that program and that facility does need work. So we're pretty confident about the items that we did put in because we feel that those are enjoyed programs. We've got this, you know, large pool facility that we would like to allow the community to enjoy. So those spaces that we're sure about protecting and enhancing, we added into this bond package. We did not feel that doing the parking lot at the high school or the middle school at this time was the best move forward.
There's another thing, some of the items with the elementary schools seem to be a duplication of things that I thought we'd already done.
And there, what we have done with our bond package is we've prioritized based on the 2020 priority list that was done in our facility study by partners in architecture. So there's no duplication of projects, only larger parts of work. Is there a specific area that you felt had already been addressed?
As I was reading through it, it looked like some of it was duplicating such as the door locks and some screening or something else. I can't remember it all. I was reading it on the computer.
Robert, I see you hoping. You'll have to turn your microphone on, please. Thank you.
Door locks at the elementary and early morning center are being taken care of this summer '23 and summer '24.
Okay, because I thought some of that was, okay, thank you.
So a lot of this work has started without super great and it may have finished up at a block basis with the night.
Okay.
Is there a motion? Place forth a motion or recommendation for the approval, application for the preliminary qualification bond.
Support.
Any other questions? Please call the vote.
Mr. Rosso?
Yes.
Mr. Williams, yes. Mrs. Rafer?
Yes.
Mrs. Richardson?
Yes.
Dr. Early?
Yes.
Mrs. Grunberg?
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes. Okay, next we have second hearing of the public. We'll open that up at 7:14. Does anyone wish to be heard? Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close that at 7:14. Next, we have trustees announcements. Mrs. Grunberg?
Just I hope everybody had a nice Easter. That's all.
Ms. Rafer?
Thank you. First, I want to apologize for being late. I got caught up in the situation in Tennessee. I do apologize for being late today. I hate to do this, but I have a, I have a problem. I read through the bylaws. I didn't see anywhere in the bylaws indicating a number of meetings that could be missed or chastisement by the president. And I took the text messages sent to me very personally. Every time I've missed a meeting, I've notified Wendy. And for someone to accuse me of lying about being sick is appalling. I'm not going to tolerate that. And every time something like this happens, I'm going to publicize it, whether people like it or not, because there's a lack of transparency that goes on around here and our community deserves better. So if there's a problem with me, address it. Because the last time I checked, I don't work for you. And I will not tolerate you treating me like I'm a reluctant or intolerant or disreputable employee. That's not going to happen. This is the third time I've had to address this issue. I will not address it again. I'll let the law handle it. Thank you.
Mr. Rosso? Forrest Park. I, I see the principal and Christine, they laugh, and then I'm glad they did because I didn't want to mess up their last name. I know I would have. Randy was not. Anyway, I, I commend them for navigating the children from one school to the next. I thought that was heroic and they are heroes and, and when you look at the principal, you can see in her eyes, not on my watch, this is not going to happen to my children on my watch. And I just wanted to commend her for those, for those acts in her administration and team over there. The new hires, no, we didn't have them, yes we did. Special, yeah. And so I just, and then the bonds are going, moving forward. I mean, everything we're doing is moving forward, there's no stopping, and it's all about 100% improvement in everything that we're doing and touching. And I'm glad that I'm a part of it. And I appreciate being a part of this community as well as a part of this school board and to have the opportunity to serve. And that's what we do, that's what servants do, we serve. And, and just, just, again, Principal Heather and her team, I just wanted to commend them. I can't say enough about them. It was great weather out there. I hope everyone had a great Easter and the holidays to come forth. And can't wait for summer to hear the kids laugh and play on, on the block, down on my block, I seen for the first time in a long time chalk on the sidewalk. You haven't seen that in a while, jelly beans all over the place. I knew we was home and I knew that our children were having a great time because our children are our future and they are right now. And to hear them laugh and play and come to school and not worry about if they're going to make it home is huge. And I'm getting off my soapbox. I'm done.
Dr. Early?
I want to say congratulations to Forest Park for all the good things that they're doing. As a caveat to that, to all of our schools, because we have our challenges, but at the end of the day, taking care of our students is the important part. And so I'm just saying kudos to them for the art program, the opportunity they had to go on. You know, I'm the arts person, I love to hear when they go on things that do with creativity. I want to say thank you to the partners in agriculture for all the work that you're doing to make sure that everything that we need for our district is getting done, even if it's only one step at a time. One step at a time will lead you from, from the front door to the back. So it is really admirable that you take that time and you're doing what we need done for our district, for our students. And it's been a day. It has been a day. It, it's amazing how one person can make a, a whole district upheaval process happen. And it's, it's annoying that, that things like this happen in this district. And as a person who has lived in this neighborhood for several years and I'm practically new on the board, I've only been on here seven years-ish, I've never seen anything like it before and I hope I never see anything like it again. So thank you, Forest Park, for y'all's due diligence in making sure that our kids were safe.
Yes, I would like to also thank the Forest City after hearing what had transpired. And I'm, I'm so grateful that they took it upon themselves to protect our children at all costs and to get them to a safe place. And I think, I, I won't accept that this is the times that we're living in. I won't accept that. It's just that we know that it happens. And so instead of responding, we need to pro, be proactive to make sure that we keep all of our children safe. I too liked Forest individuals about the support with each teacher that needed it. Because all of us, we are not perfect, but when we see something that can help us to help our children, that, that's a good thing. And not selfish, not, you know, hiding it or keeping it all to ourselves. So I really like that. And I also like this working and, and there being the ones to get extra funds from the Office Depot, since I'm a regular person there.
Right.
So I can, I can see my fun, my money going there. I, I wanted to ask if they give us a card or we just mentioned that we're from East Point or something that, that, that would get there. And I'd like to thank you also for the work that you're doing to make sure that our schools and our equipment and everything is functioning properly and well, because that's the only way teachers can be productive, if they have things to work with. And I, I appreciate that as well.
That's it. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, team. And I'd like to commend Forest Park staff and everybody that had a hand in, in making sure that our students are safe and the processes is what was impeccable, how we handled it from start to finish. I thought that was very, very well executed. Because without a plan, it creates chaos. So I think that the execution was great. And now, through it all, we had a great presentation from the principal and, and her secretary. But, you know, I agree with Ms. Richardson. I refuse to accept the fact that we should accept stuff like this. We have to and we are. I think we're doing a pretty good job at being proactive as well as reactive to, to the times that we're living in. I mean, our, our elementary school children are early learning centers. I mean, instead of, or I guess now as a part of learning how to count and your ABCs, you also have to learn how to lock and run or duck and run or, you know what I'm saying? So it's, bad times don't come to stay, they come to pass. So we have to figure out how we can better, not saying that we're not doing a great job, but how we can better protect our district and other districts, because it's just getting too close and too uncomfortable. So I hope everyone had a wonderful Easter weekend. Looks like the, the weather's starting to break and like Rosco said, you're starting to see more kids out in the yards playing. Just be cognizant when you're driving through the neighborhoods that, you know, kids are out playing and just slow down and look for them, because a lot of times if they're chasing a ball or flying a kite or whatever they're doing nowadays, they might not be, be paying attention to you. So let's look out for them. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. I don't mind doing this. I just want to let every board member know up here that if I ever offer- Um, I just want to let every board member know up here that if I ever offer constructive criticism to any board member, I do it privately, okay? I hope you don't mind that. If you choose to, uh, make it public, that's your choice, but I believe handling it privately is the best way to do it. That's just how I feel about it, and that's the way I was raised. Secondly, Dr. Early, seven years, really?
Yeah.
Phew, time flies when we're having fun, doesn't it? I didn't realize it was about seven years, wow. Um, and then it's, a question came up as far as the high school and investment in the high school and the middle school and stuff like this, I just wanted to mention, and I asked the superintendent if she wanted to bring it up, but at the time she said, no, not ready at that time just yet, and then she dropped me off and says, well, mention it in the trustee's announcement, so I guess it falls upon me. I really didn't want to steal her thunder, because she probably has more information, more background information, probably has had more conversations with people than I have, and I'm quite sure she's probably maybe shared some of that information in an update in the future or something, I'm quite sure. But we were able to do a walkthrough with Senator Kleinfeld and Senator?
Kimmeleri.
Kimmeleri at the high school Friday, this past Friday, and I think when they approached this, they said the first topic, the thing that they wanted to talk about was basically about the amount of, um, investment there's been, uh, uh, funding and stuff as far as infrastructure in the school systems as they are, and we were walking through the high school in particular because of the historical nature of it and the amount of money that it would take to actually fix that building, and they wanted to kind of see for themselves where infrastructure was in a school district like ours, and, and get a pretty good idea, because we're not the only ones. There are other school districts out there that also need the assistance as well too. But they came here and to talk about it, and what's, the nice thing about it is I know, for instance, uh, the one senator's, uh, children at least, did graduate from this high school, so she has a tie to this high school, uh, Senator Kleinfeld, and they seemed very passionate about it, and it was, uh, the superintendent's going to remark more about it, but it, it was just, uh, very interesting, and, um, I was surprised, I walked away feeling pretty good that, you know, they're at least going to try to work with us to do something if they can, and I, and it really was a good feeling to see that, or to, it was really a good feeling to have. Um, and then, and the last thing I want to, I'll mention is, um, I really want to thank it administration, the staff, and, um, also our local police and how fast they reacted, and everybody involved with the students for ensuring their safety. Um, and it, and it's pretty easy to say, well, you know, everybody was kept physically safe, right? You know, I mean, and, and that's a, that's a big, that's the first and, uh, foremost thing that has to happen, is the physical safety of everybody. But we also have to be concerned about the psychological impact on our students as well too, and our staff, and, you know, even though physically nothing happened to anybody, knock a wood, and I hope I don't ever have to face this situation again, and nobody in our district does, but it's a very small sample size, but I want the staff and the, um, and the adults in the situation to realize that, and my grandson goes to that school, and he came home and it didn't seem like there was a whole psych, a whole lot of psychological damage done to him by the incident. Um, he was more remarking about the fact that he was at the middle school and had a chance to see the music room and, and the various things they did at the middle school. Um, and, and in talking with the superintendent, uh, it sounds like some of the kids actually did not want to leave the middle school, they were enjoying themselves there and kind of wanted to stay. So the staff really did the job, not only the physical well-being of our students, but the psychological well-being and the emotional well-being of our students as well too, and I think the impact is going to be very little on them. I'm actually more concerned about the staff, to be quite honest with you, because the kids are young and are pretty resilient, and it seems like the staff handled it well. But, and, and, and we all know kids at, at those younger ages, they kind of move on to the next thing, right? Their attention span really isn't that long, so they're moving on to the next thing. But us as adults, we remember, and it kind of gets embedded in our memory, and we remember this stuff. Um, so I'm concerned, very concerned about the staff, uh, because, um, and I want them to feel comfortable that they can reach out to anybody within the district if they need to, um, and, and will forward it. And, and then there is one last thing that I wanted to, because the situation kind of brings up something, we have a tendency, and I think we're going to contact, um, the local media as well too, so I went through policy, and I wanted to make sure everybody understood that when we're in situations like this, how we handle them. By and large, um, I would assume that if anybody got contact, any other board member got contacted by the media, that they would immediately forward them to either the president or the superintendent, and at that point, we will decide, you know, if, if something came to me from the media, something about this, the first thing I would do is contact the superintendent anyways, I would not respond to the media, because they're on the ground, they know what's going on, and they know what the message should be at that point. I don't want to risk giving out any wrong information. So I looked back at policy, and I wanted to make sure that, um, how we were dealing with this far as policy is concerned, and if you look at, um, under functioning of the board, item C, it's on page three in our policies, um, it talks about the roles as far as the board is concerned, and it says that the president is the official spokesperson for the board, okay? Don't really use that. I guess you could say that pulpit, or bully pulpit, or whatever, or that avenue often, and this would be a case where maybe if we had been talking about this and we had decided that if the media contacts me, here's what I'm going to, statement I'm going to kind of say, or if the kind, you know, if we had talked about it at that point, but we didn't. So I would normally just kick it to them. Then it also says, and I want to remind everybody of this, this is all out of our policy manual, it says on the very next page, and this is under duties and roles of individual board members, um, it says the board acts as a whole and only at properly convened and noted board meetings. Individual board members do not possess the powers that reside in the board and may not act or purport to act for the board unless the board has specifically delegated the authority of an individual member to act. Individual members of the board may not speak for the board. A board member who speaks to otherwise, or otherwise communicates with the media, the public, or other officials on district matters shall make clear to the audience that the board member is expressing only that board member's views, and that those views do not necessarily reflect the, reflect the views of the board as a whole or any other board member. Um, I, I am very careful, and I take this very seriously, that when I'm out in public and I'm talking myself, and I'm pretty sure that all the rest of my board members are doing the same thing, and this is just more of a reminder than anything, I always kind of state the fact that I'm speaking for myself. Like, for instance, even when I was reading for the kids in the eighth grade, when they were talking to me and they were asking me questions, I said, now you have to understand something, you're talking to John Grunberg, a member of this community, that's who you're talking to. You're not talking to me as the board president, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm not speaking for anybody on the board, I'm speaking for myself. So they would ask me questions, most of them were silly, like what kind of animals do I have at home, and, you know, how tall am I, and stuff like this, but I always say that just to make sure that if they do touch on anything, they understand it's just coming from me, not from you guys, okay? Um, and that doesn't, and I want to make sure that doesn't take away the fact that, say for instance, uh, I thought of you and hats not hate, so say for instance, somebody wanted to do, um, an, an article like CNG or something like that in the East Side, or Warren Weekly or something like that, and want, reached out and wanted to do an article because they heard about the program she had, I would expect that you are going to speak to that, you know what I mean? Something along those lines, just using that as an example. But we have to be very careful in these situations, because we cannot afford, we saw what happened in Uvalde, and how all kinds of misinformation got out, and it really ended up coming back to bite people in the butt, right? And, and that wasn't a good situation, but I just want to finish off by once again saying thank you to everybody involved, you took care of our kids, and I really appreciate it, and I think, I can't speak for the board up here, we really appreciate what you did for our kids today over at Forest Park, we really appreciate that. Um, unless anybody doesn't have anything else, the meeting is adjourned at, what is that, seven thirty-three, we'll say? Is that on a bar, right? It's off by two minutes.